That's all right.
But Russ, he's not on a screen either. And so the people that are here, Kim Barron, you, myself, Russ D'Enzo, Julie Cady, and did I say Greg Kava, and Lance Reynolds from the Republican American.
Okay.
Sorry, I will call this meeting to order. It is 7:39. First hiccup. It's okay. Um, so anyway, we're on this Zoom thing. All right. So we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 3rd and the special meeting of March 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? No. Nope. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, um, I should, I should start out by saying we, we are being recorded because that is what we have to do. And when we get down a little bit, I'm just going to go over some of the executive orders and why we're even doing something like this or having to do it. So then I wonder, um, hmm, I think Kim Pacriffka was going to try and get on. Maybe she'll get on a little bit. Okay, so we have the tax.
It is right now. Barbara, I'm helping her.
Oh, okay. Well, we have the tax collectors' report. There are two things. I know you don't have it in front of you, Russ and Jim, but one is James Connolly for $242.73. It's obviously an overpayment.
Denied.
And the other one is a JP Morgan Chase Bank, $273.81.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve both.
Okay.
Second. Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's keep moving on. So we have communications from the public and we have Greg Kava here. We obviously are not having a lot of people, hmm, join us, which is, are you? But whatever. Okay. Commissions and boards. Greg, we'll put you down with Region 12 if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Commission and board appointments. The only thing that we still have outstanding is the Roxbury Museum Board. Still looking for one person.
Correct.
And that's, and that's it. So I make a motion to.
Is that tabled?
We need to table it. It's not listed here because it was from last.
All right, I'll make a motion to table that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we get into the business part of it. And what I would like to do is, um, okay, we have somebody else that just joined us. 203-788.
That's me, Kim.
Oh, Kim Pacriffka. Hi, Kim. Okay. Um, so the first item is remembering Mark Lyon. And I just, I put this up because I worked with Mark for a number of years. He was a terrific colleague and friend. And he, obviously, he lost his battle with cancer. And I think that if we have a moment of silence for him, Jim Britton and I saw Mark at his house before all this virus stuff started. And it was really a great time. He was in good spirits. And we actually all had a drink and toasted him and all that he's done, he did for the town of Washington and in our cove. So I would just like to take a moment of silence to remember Mark Lyon. Okay, thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is COVID-19. There's just a lot of things that have turned our world upside down with this virus. Um, the protocols, the executive orders that have come. They started out with E O one, A, and now I believe he's on X. And he's going to have to go to double, double alphabet numbers pretty soon. They really have impacted almost everything. But the ones that we're really interested in are how the town has to operate. And, um, and so going along with this stay home, stay, stay safe, this is why we're doing our meeting on Zoom. But we have to give the public the opportunity to participate. So Zoom, this, this platform, you can use, you can use it for free, but it only allows 10 people on and it cuts you off after 40 minutes. So I took the liberty of purchasing it for a month. I mean, I'm sorry, for a year, which costs like $130. And it'll allow, I believe, up to 250 or 300 people to come in on a meeting. And I thought, uh, we're going to have to do something with our town meeting, uh, with our, with the Board of Finance is going to have to do something with their budget, uh, their, what is it, their budget meeting. And so I said, for the money, this is what we're going to do. And the Board of Finance has used it already. That is, that's good. Greg, what are you guys using for, um, what are you guys using at the Board of Ed?
Well, we're using Zoom. And we, we're using it for Board of Ed meetings, for committee meetings, and they are teaching the students that way.
Yeah. Yep. So that's great. I see we have somebody new. 516413.
Uh, Barbara, it's John Hopkins.
Hey, John, welcome.
I have you on phone. I can't seem to get into Zoom using the meeting ID and the password on my computer. Okay.
Aye, aye. Okay. All right. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
So, um, we're just talking about the impacts of this COVID-19. And, um, you know, things that it's impacted, obviously, are local businesses, unemployment, the Board of Assessment Appeals, 90-day delay, which affects the grand list. In our case, it's not a huge number. But, uh, these, you know, they can't go into people's homes. But I have to say that I'm very proud of our employees and how they're taking hold of this and working remote. And, um, our town did a good thing with closing the town hall to the public first. And we were all in there for a week. But then we closed the town hall to the employees also. I mean, I just, I read today that the mayor of New Britain is saying that people still have to show up for work at this, at City Hall. So that's, um, that's tough. I haven't had any complaints. I've had a couple of complaints, but not the way that the town is operating. The employees are calling in and getting their messages and they're taking care of their emails. We have, um, we have, you know, Dropbox outside. Things are being dropped off. The building official comes in several days a week. He takes care of his stuff and goes out and does outside inspections. He's not going in anyone's homes either. So, um, we have a lot of great things going on. We, we, you know, got into the paper with all the mask aid initiative. And I know Kim's on here. I know she sewed a lot. And also with the ambulance, has been delivering masks to the residents because there are so many masks that were made. And initially, it was supposed to be for the ambulance association, fire department, police. And we got so many, and we're still getting more, that Kim said, why don't we offer them to the residents? And I'll tell you, it's been a huge hit. And a lot of people are still calling to get them. So, I think it's a great thing. So I want to thank Kim Pacriffka. She's not the only one that was sewing. There are an awful lot of people we have. I have a list of people that I'm trying to keep up with. I just had someone call today and say they are sewing. So those are good things that are coming out. Uh, we had people on South Street that said, you know, we need to have something and it's called In It Together. So I put it on our sign that's over by the hodge. People have put those signs up on their home. Everybody, not everybody, many, many people are doing what they're supposed to be doing with the social distancing. And, um, I think that that is why still today, as of this afternoon, Roxbury has three confirmed cases. They can't tell me how many people were tested because there's a delay in that data. But there have been a lot. And when I get that number, I will share it. But I just spoke with Donna, our health director, this afternoon, and she didn't have it. So I thought that the peak was coming to this area, Roxbury in North, this week and next week. And now I just read something today that it's going to be two, two more weeks after this. So I hope that we can keep things going. Um, I've got some, one of our biggest issues is parking at the Land Trust properties. And I just was talking with the police today. We got to keep the people off the roads. They were blocking Mine Hill Road the other day. And maybe we put the police on, I'm thinking about Easter Sunday, actually, two of them working, just to keep cars away. Because once they're there and parked and they're hiking, there's no way to go back and make them move it. So that, that is a problem. And there have been a couple of complaints about, you know, social distancing and people are coming up on people on a, on a trail. And it's a group. But it's not that everybody has to walk single file because if there's families that are living together in their house, they can certainly walk together. And so there's a misconception about that. Um, we did cover up the basketball courts because there were people playing there. We took away the Portage John at the park. The other bathrooms are locked. We put a yellow tape around the playground area. Somebody said we should be taking the tennis court nets down, but I don't see a lot of people there. And when that happens, we could look at doing that. So anyway, um, you know, we did have a problem about Jeeps that were over at the market the other day. And then they were also at the park, some of them. And it was a group. They were not from town. But then I learned that it was Jeep Sunday, something like that. And, uh, so we probably won't have that again. Don't, won't have to worry about that again. Because I really don't want to close the park. A lot of people walk there and they walk their dogs. So I hope that you're in agreement with that. So one of the others. Yep. So, um, and, you know, certainly don't want to close the, um, the Land Trust. And in my email blast today, I, I mean, I can't close the Land Trust, I guess. The only thing we can control is, try to control is the parking. But, um, you know, people are outside and you got to give them something to do. So the other thing was that the, in one of the executive orders, the chief executive officer of the town could have a declaration, emergency declaration, which I did do. And I believe I shared it. And it basically, uh, it's something we wanted to do because when it comes to getting reimbursed for FEMA, with FEMA, for whatever's going to come up. And Kim Barron is trying to keep track of any other expenses that we have. Public Works knows that they have to. We really haven't had a whole lot of anything yet because we haven't had to deal with unemployment or making that decision. But what it does is it, um, let me see, that it declared a civil preparedness emergency in the town of Roxbury. And what it allows is the first selectman and the local emergency management director, which is Bernie Meehan, shall exercise all powers and authority granted to the municipality and/or its chief executive officer under Title 28 of the Connecticut general statutes. Now that covers a lot of things. But the one that I wanted to bring up today is, because this was a complaint, is the food truck. We have a, we have a food truck in town. And I allowed that truck to park in town. It is a, it is a resident who with the flip of a switch lost all, like the fairs and festivals and everything that were scheduled for the entire summer. And everything was shut down. So he really didn't know what he was going to be able to do. So Mark Lowe, who has the gas station, said he would love to have him over there. He said he would like to go there because it's on a state road and, and et cetera. So number one, I know, we don't allow food trucks in town just to sit on the side of the road. They have to be requested for, like through the Recreation Commission for an event that they're having, or it has to be on town property that we, the selectmen allow. So going against zoning, and I know that this does, but it was helping not only the, the two, the two people that have small businesses in town pay taxes here. It was allowing, um, a, a new way for people to find food, uh, make food available to residents because the dine-in operations were then prohibited by the governor. So in the market, you know, the chairs are all up on the table. And we really don't have anything, you know, else that's serving food. There's going to be a restaurant going down in the business district soon. But, um, it's not there yet. And I hope it does come because I understand it's pizza and it would be great for takeout. But if he has a dining area, he can't have people in there either. So anyway, um, I know that this is a big complaint, mostly from the other business owner here. And so I do want to bring it up because I want basically to try to get a vote of confidence from the selectmen that I'm at, you know, that, that to, to, to keep, to continue to allow this food truck to operate where it is. And Jim, I know.
You have it, Barb. Barb, you know you have it. You have it. It's.
Uh, Russ, not so fast.
Done deal.
No, 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 Russ. Wait a minute, Russ.
It's done because I totally disagree with the location. I'm not saying he can't be in town. From a zoning standpoint, he should be on, uh, town property or the business district with permission from property owners in the business district. Numerous places he can go.
Oh, yeah. Mark's not, Mark's not in the business district, right?
Correct. He's not. And that opens up another.
So the guy who complains, we're going to put him across the street from the guy who complains?
I know.
That's totally up. Uh, we basically said, uh, way I feel, it's up to Mike Palumba. And, um, as far as the complaint, uh, the word I got is the complaint would go away if he was, uh, in the business district or on town property.
Oh, good. Put him in town hall then. I'm all for that. I vote to put him in town hall.
Well, you know, I don't. I mean, that's.
He asked for it.
I know. What I, um.
He did say that. He did say that.
He, he did. What's he think town hall is?
Well, yeah, he said anywhere but there, where he is.
Well, there you go. There's our solution. Let's not dwell on it.
Or business district.
All right.
This is, this, it's a special time.
Yes, it is.
It's a, this, this helps a family and it helps the town. That's the bottom line. Why, why he doesn't go for a special permit? Jim, he can't get a special permit?
No.
We've been here before, about a year ago, right?
Correct. We don't allow food trucks. We have nothing written in.
We don't allow food trucks at all.
Don't allow food trucks.
Yeah.
We allow them if the Recreation Commission is going to, if someone is going to, first of all, anybody who has a private party at their house can have a food truck.
Certainly. Sure.
Right. And you can have it at their rec commission things, but.
Correct. Yep.
So let's put him at town hall. You can't put him in at the firehouse if there's an emergency. Somebody trying to buy a hot dog, make it run over. But let's put him at town hall.
I mean.
Nobody going in there. It's empty.
Well, I would like to have it either stay where he is. He's on a state road. Give him the option.
I want him to stay where he is, but the complaint says no. So let the complaint, he's, put, put him in Monson Meadows.
You know what? I mean, the tail wagging, the dog. About the complainant. It's, you know what? What's right for everybody. And I, and, and you know what, Jim? If I were you, I couldn't vote for this either. But I, um, I would, I would like to say that he can stay there or he can go to the town hall.
I make a motion, he stays where he is.
Um, I will, I obviously have to disagree. I think he would do better business-wise somewhere else, anywhere else.
I don't know.
Uh, I think, I think he would do. Well, no.
What does he want to do, Barbara?
What is what?
What does Mike want to do?
Mike.
Well, I mean, he, he, he's thrilled to be where he is, actually.
But have we offered town halls?
I made a motion. I made a motion.
I will second that. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
My turn?
Yep. Yes, it's your turn.
Opposed.
Well, I thought you hung up.
No, no. I was waiting to be asked. Polit, uh, I'm, I'm opposed to this location. Uh, I'd like to see him on town property, not private property. Um, and I personally, I think he'd do better somewhere else.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, it's up to Mike where he wants to go. If he wants to stay there. And, uh, it's gonna, you know, we're going to deal with it down the road. It's not going to go away. It won't go away. Uh, we're going to be, there's going to be lawyers involved. It might be six, eight months from now, but they're going to be involved. Uh, because we're not doing, doing.
Well, what I say.
No, we, we, we've had an opinion from Gail. I mean, let's be serious here. This is an emergency time. When it's over, he's out. That's the bottom line.
I talk with Gail.
But, but we're, we're, we're out of Robert's rules here. We made a motion. There was asked for discussion. Either you vote for it, against it, or you abstain. And then it has to stop.
Yep.
Or we're out of Robert's rules.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So with that, on that note, um, the next item on the agenda. All right. So we have in March, and I don't know of all of April. I know some of the board meetings, uh, you know, have, are, been canceled. And people, and they're trying to figure out how to have them. Obviously, the Board of Finance used the Zoom and, uh, the Zoom platform, and it worked wonderful. So what do we want to do? Do we want to keep, uh, just it's up to the chairman? Or should we say, you know what, we should resume, we should resume, uh, our, our, our meetings, especially.
Well, we don't know. So we should leave it up to our chairman and we should wait. Cause we don't know right now. Things seem to be leveling off. I've canceled the wetland meeting for April unless something, um, something big comes in. I don't want to do these wetland meetings on the phone because there's maps involved. It'd be very complicated for the public to be involved. Um, I would rather wait and leave it up to the chairman. Certain meetings, uh, may, may, they may be able to have because they could keep social distancing and a lot of the public won't attend. I don't know. Each chairman would know separately. I know for wetlands, we may have a subdivision, uh, coming in. Uh, it, it will be well attended. I'm pretty sure of that. So I've asked the applicant to wait till May. And, and even then, I said, nobody, even the governor and the president, don't know what's going to happen. And we need to see how this all plays out. That's, that's my feeling.
I'm, I'm okay with that, except, um, we can't say that you're going to have a public meeting in the town hall for the, for the near future. We just, like you said, we don't know. But so that, when you decide, I mean, if, what if this goes through June? You almost, like, we, I would like to have our town meeting. Uh, we're allowed to, uh, take it out, I think, 90 days. It's just going to add a lot of grief with taxes, everything. And we're on schedule and I'd like to keep on schedule. And so for example, at a, at the town meeting, I have to have the budget available, um, online. Any other information that pertains to the annual meeting that people can go and see and have it. And then we can have a meeting like this. And they don't have to be posting it, um, you know, on the screen here. It's, you're here.
I'm good with that.
Okay. And so that's how the land use can run also.
Right.
Right. We, we can't, zoning canceled Aprils.
Okay.
Yep, we canceled Aprils. There's nothing.
There's nothing critical on our list except for the subdivision and, and they've agreed to move to May.
Okay. All right. Well, um, with ZBA, they may, they may do this platform and, and have whatever. They have to have a public hearing. That is not waived. You have to figure out how to have it without having the public there. So, uh, I'll throw that, you know, out to the net.
I say have it in Monson Meadows.
With the food truck? All right.
With the food truck, yeah.
Didn't mean that. You can delete that.
Well, it's outside. It could be six feet apart. It's safer than having it in a town hall. It's not a bad idea, I don't think. During the day, nobody's really working.
You'd have to have a microphone to take votes or whatever. Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. We will figure that out. Okay. So the next thing, uh, but I'm, I'm happy to know that y'all canceled everything. Uh, your two anyway, right now.
Yeah.
Um, okay. The next thing is, um, deferring property taxes. So, and Kim Pacriffka is on. I'm glad you're here. But in what the executive order, I, it was, I think it was seven S. The governor came up with a way to allow towns to defer, uh, payment on, on property taxes. And so what they came up with was, they had two options available. And one of them, oh boy, here, wait a minute. I just filed it somewhere. One, one of the options is to, um, allow people to not pay their taxes for 90 days. Period. They do have to fill out, um, a certification form that is, tells, says that they really do not have the ability to pay their taxes. And, or you can, um, so number one, you have to allow this one way or the other. 100% defer paying their taxes, or that we add a 3% interest rate versus the current 18%. That, um, is the law right now. So.
I'd go for the 90 days. Give them time. I'd give one or the other. I'd go for the 90 days, right?
Yes, I agree. No, no interest, no 3%, no 18%, just 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay. And they would, and they do have to fill out this, um, this form.
Extension, yeah.
We have until April 20 something. And Kim, I'm going to let you speak in a minute, April 25th, to let OPM know which option we're choosing. So Kim Pacriffka, do you want to add anything?
Um, yeah, I talked to some tax collectors in Wichfield County today. And most of them are going with the deferment choice because it's only going to involve the 2019 grand list where the other one, the low interest rate, 3% is going to be active from March 10th, I believe.
Right.
Through July. So it's going to be two grand list years, which is going to be pretty messy. So the taxes that are delinquent as of March 10th were already delinquent before. So, I mean, if they, if they said, you know, from March 3rd, they would go 3%, but they're not. So I would rather, with our software company, it's going to be a lot cleaner if we just deal with the 2019 grand list. And it's only going to be people that qualify.
Right.
You know, there's, the OPM is setting the standards, but we have to okay if the, the tax collector in the, the town have to okay who applies for it. So I, I haven't talked to, we have a tax collector's, um, attorney, Adam Cohen. He usually dissects the law for us in plain language so we can understand. He hasn't gotten back to us yet. So I guess even if he hasn't, I would still go with this deferment. Because the, and the only other thing that's affecting us, and we don't have any choice over, is the tax sale that I had at 34 Spargo Road.
Yep.
Um, that will be extended too. Cause he would, he had six months to redeem it. So that's going to be extended probably 90 days. So in the end.
So I make a motion to extend it 90 days and go with the deferment.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second. But because the, um, I mean, you'll second. The, um, because the information, when it first came out, it was from like March to July 1. It was very confusing, but they did iron it out. And, and Kim, you're right. So it's, it's July 1 taxes that are due. And they do have to, um, show with this form, this election form that, uh, they cannot pay it. Otherwise, everyone's taxes are due through the, through July. You all automatically get one month till August to have.
In this, um, form has been filled out.
Guys, a motion's been made. I, I hate to be, um, Robert's rules guy.
It is. We are Robert's rules.
We got to stop discussion.
No, 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 no. It's a motion's made, second, and then there's discussion. We didn't vote yet.
Okay. I didn't hear discussion. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
But only the selectmen can talk.
No, I asked him to comment. I asked Kim Pakrivka to comment because she's the tax collector.
I, I know, but once a motion's made, only the voting body could, could have the discussion.
Okay. Alright.
I made a motion. Jim seconded it. We get it all.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We will let OPM know. I will ask him one question. Is the selectman letting OPM or the tax office? I think the selectman will let him know.
There, there's a form you have to fill out. Um, I have it with me.
Yep. No, I have it here. Yeah, it is the selectman. I will take care of that. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on. Region 12 budget. Um, two things. One, and it did go out twice in an email blast, uh, about the, the ta, the school's budget. And, um, it's asking people, because they also, by this executive order, the school board can approve the school budget, which they did, which you did or you're going to do.
We did.
You did.
Uh, uh- Wait, wait, wait. Hold, hold on a second. What we did is we, we approved the superintendent's budget as our budget. So I don't know if we've actually taken the formal vote yet. We're waiting for comments now.
Okay. Right. And that is what the link is in the email blast. It's because they're looking for comments on their, on the school budget. And the school budget for Roxbury has, um, decreased, which is nice because it, we got hit twice, two years in a row, pretty hard. So, um, this was welcome for us. Um, I mean, it was a welcome sign for us, let me tell you. And I know how hard everybody worked. So overall, the budget is flat. And, uh, the, Greg, do you want to say anything else on that?
No.
I will say one more thing. I will say one more thing. Because of the decrease, Roxbury, the town budget, we were allowed to put more things in for our capital plan, um, and take advantage of that. And Kim Barron, you may comment, because of this COVID-19, the Board of Finance now has the ta, the selectman's budget. And they are, you know, added, they added a couple of things in which are, which make a lot of sense. And maybe, um, Kim, you just want to comment on that and then we'll get back right to the school.
Yes. Um, the Board of Finance requested that we add some money to the contingency line, uh, which we did. We added $100,000 to the contingency line. And, um, we also went back and added money to the civil preparedness line. Um, I'm gonna try to, it was about $100,000. It's, it's over $200,000 added to the budget just for COVID-19.
Right. Cause if we have to pay out things that we would like to get reimbursed from FEMA, we have to have a place to pay it from. Right?
And tomorrow, tomorrow is, uh, a meeting that I have to, uh, on with the state and how this is all gonna work with FEMA and it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a very, very long process. Um, this whole thing from beginning to end. We have no end in sight yet. So we're trying to prepare for the worst. And if we use the money, if it's available to us, if we leave that in the budget, if we don't use it, we don't use it. So trying to prepare for the work.
But even with all of those changes, et cetera, the town's budget, um, is still going to be a, a negative percentage. And I don't, can't tell you exactly what it is because the Board of Finance is not finished with the budget. Alright. So Greg, we had a conversation today, this morning with the, um, superintendent and the three first selectmen and Greg Kava, and it was regarding the proposed referendum for the roof uh, up at the school, et cetera. It was over $4 million project. I mean, uh, budget referendum. So with all of the executive orders and how to handle referendums, it's not gonna be an easy thing to do. So Greg, you go.
Sure. Uh, the, the first thing I wanted to just circle back to the budget is the, the current budget on the web, our website indicates that the Roxbury's expected reduction from last year will be $529,000. So that, that's, that's the reduction that you'll have, which is a pretty healthy one, because Roxbury got hit hard the last two years. So-
We're 1.2 million over. Right.
So, uh, so you did the right thing. You shed a few kids and, uh, got that number down. But yeah, the, on the referendum, the, the obvious problem is, is that unlike the budget process where it's a lot easier for us to approve, uh, we don't have the same thing with a referendum. A referendum has to go to the voters. Uh, we, we currently have a four and a half million dollar referendum we were gonna put up, but I'm not sure when we're gonna be able to put it up. Um, we're, we're looking at, you know, if we're lucky, we might get it in June, but I think, I think it could be July or even possibly November. They may put it on with the, with the, uh, the election in November because they just don't want people socializing polls. And, you know, if you, if you're watching the TV, it happened today in Wisconsin because a court decided they had to have their primary and they had lines all the way around the block with people standing six feet apart and it was a nightmare. Um, and we'll have to see what that does to turnout. So we're looking at that and we're looking at the fact that because of the way this works, if we even got the budget referendum in June, uh, it would take us probably a, a, three months, uh, lead time after the thing approved, assuming it's approved. It would take us three months just to get the air conditioning units that have to go on the roof. And then those have to be installed. So now you're four months out. Then you gotta get the roof going. You're five, six months out. So what ends up happening is we're putting a roof on in December, which makes no sense. And that roof is such that we really can't wait another year. Uh, that we, we run a very big risk if we wait another year that the renovation of the roof, which involves basically replacing the entire pebbled surface of it. We've, if, if, if it gets enough leaks between now and then, we won't be able to renovate it. We'll have to replace it. And that'll be somewhere between six and eight million dollars. So in order to avoid that, we wanted, we were trying to find a way we can move this along faster and we think we have. Uh, if you recall, back when we, in 2015, we went to the voters and asked them to, um, we asked them, and they voted yes, that we should spend $39,491,000 um, for the design equipment, furnishing, everything of a new agri-science academy and, uh, a renovated science wing and other philos, other facilities improvements at the Chapag Valley School. And so our council has told us that this is broad enough, that the referendum done in 15 is broad enough uh, to cover the, uh, it's certainly the roof and the, the things we want, the things we think we need to immediate, immediately, which are the rooftop HVAC units, the roof and, and the maintenance garage, which is not very expensive, but we desperately need it.
Um, but Greg, are you within budget of that?
Well, see, the thing is, is that after the voters approved $39 billion for, the state pushed us to reduce the scope and size of the project. So we were only planning to spend about $35 million of that. So we, we have about $4 million left, uh, in the fund. And right now, the school, the, the AgSTEM project is coming in slightly under budget. Uh, you know, assuming, oh, we've, oh, we've got very little work left. The buildings are all complete. We're just doing landscaping and paving, stuff like that, which is not something that usually has change orders. So as a result, we expect we're gonna come in somewhere a couple of hundred thousand under budget. And, um, as a result, we probably have somewhere close to four, four and a half million dollars. But we, we, you know, we really felt like, you know, here we said we wanted to spend it on AgSTEM and the science labs. And even though we put other things potentially in there, uh, this would be doing something different than we originally said. We're not thrilled with it, but I just, in my, in my honest conscience, I cannot put the voters to the possibility of spending $8 million on a new roof because we didn't move fast enough because we were, you know, we were slicing and dicing. And I think, I think it's proper leadership for us to go forward and do this. And that's what I'd like the board to do. But I said, I'm not gonna do it unless I've talked to the three towns. And that's why we met with the selectmen today, cause I wanted, I mean, you know, I wanted you to understand this, that we had this issue and that, um, and that we felt this was the right way to deal with it so that we did the most cost-effective things for the taxpayers. And so that-
You want for it? Do we need a vote?
Uh, I don't know if we need a vote so much as I just wanted to get a, a vote of confidence. I wanted to get a sense that you guys were behind us and that we weren't off in the weeds on this.
No, I'm, I'm with you 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on board.
Should we vote?
Uh, I don't think-
I think the money's, no, the money's there, ready to be used.
Yeah, the, the, the vote's already been taken place by the voters. So I just wanted to-
No, no, I mean us, the Board of Selectmen, should, should I make a motion, uh, to uh, have a vote of confidence to the Board of Ed to go forward with, with the roof work under the, uh, the initial referendum?
I will not put that down.
Pardon?
I will not say-
You won't turn it down.
Okay.
Well, that's my motion. I make that motion.
I'll second it. I'm on board.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nope.
I think they should go forward with it. Yes, it's a savings. It's a money-saving plan.
Yeah. Well, it, it's something that has to get done. The roof is leaking.
It's not something we-
That's what's out there. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Uh, the other thing I wanted to tell you is that you, we really have a very special community with the, with the parents, the students, the teachers. Uh, this online learning is going really well. Um, and, you know, it's not perfect for everyone because there are times when people would rather be in the classroom with their friends, especially in high school. I think if you're a high school senior, it's gotta be a miserable senior year. Um, but I will-
And the kid's out of the house.
And then you're stuck in the house and then that's bad for the parents and the kids. But I will tell you that we have gotten a lot- We, what, the superintendent put out a, a survey to the students to ask them how well they were doing. And of the 420 odd, 450 odd students at Chapag, she got 300 responses. And the responses were virtually, you know, uniformly good, if you, including a few that said they really appreciated being able to get up later. So, uh-
Yeah. And I'll say Megan, Megan Bennett has been a true leader, an excellent hire and has done a marvelous job at this whole problem. She's really been a leader on this. I'm, I'm very happy we, we brought her into our region.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And I will tell you that one of the things we're doing different from other school districts is we are actually doing what's called synchronous learning. So for part of the day, they're actually, the teachers and the students are on Zoom doing exactly what we're doing. There's give and take, there's feedback. Uh, and they're getting to participate. And so what they do is for every 40-minute class, they do 20 minutes of synchronous with the, tell, with, you know, on Zoom. And then they do 20 minutes of, of bookwork. And there's no homework. And the net effect is that kids feel like they're getting the, the lesson distilled into what's the most important thing and they feel like they're getting a lot of, out of it. And so we, we're, the other thing we found is that there are some students, some of our students with unique needs that, that do better in this environment than a classroom environment. And so people that otherwise would have struggled more are actually doing better. So we're trying to find the silver linings and, and one of the main reasons we're able to do this and we're being very successful at it is we have a tremendous community and we have a lot of supportive people and we appreciate that. And, and we're gonna get these kids, we're gonna get these kids an education. This is not gonna be a lost year. No way, no how.
That's right. And you've done a great job as, uh, the chairman, Greg.
Well, thank you, Russ. I appreciate that. It's a challenging year.
Very challenging year. And I will echo, uh, Megan really stepped up during all of this and, uh, there really wasn't a a beat missed with getting, you know, well, I mean, I feel bad for the teachers that had a, to get this, you know, all this learning for them to do this kind of teaching. I mean, that there was no, there was no time for them to learn it, but they really have shown. And you know what? Because they're using this platform, it really is nice that these classrooms are small, that you can-
No, it is, it's good that they're small. Makes it a lot easier. Well, one of the things is because we had the week off before we started distance learning, after the governor closed the schools, uh, because we had that week off, we canceled the April vacation week and that, that basically saved us four days. So we ended up losing one day. We had 181 days in the schedules. So we are gonna get in what used to be the mandatory 180 days and we're gonna finish school by June 18th. And that's, and that, and that's, that's what happens when you're, when you're on top of it and you're planning. And I give the superintendent an amazing amount of credit for really doing that. The other thing is remember, region 12 is the largest employer in the three towns. And all of our employees are working. They're all at work and they're all being paid. And, and they're all working actually too. Uh, our custodial people are doing marvelous jobs because they have to clean up after all the workers that are coming in and out of the school, doing punch list items at the high school. And, um, and we've got cafeteria workers who are preparing meals for children who get them at home. And so there's a, everyone working extremely hard. Our teachers are obviously putting in yeoman service and our paras are working and, uh, and our clerical and office staff are all working remotely. So our people are employed, our people are working and we're gonna contribute and hopefully the people will be able to pay their taxes come July.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Well, uh, well, this will be in the minutes and the public will be able to see it and they'll be able to listen to it also. Okay. Thank you, Greg. Um, okay. So the next thing on the, was the town budget. And all I was gonna say is, you know, the town budget is still with the Board of Finance. Um, and it will, I believe, be all set to go to their public hearing at the end of the month. Um, and they're doing a great job with that. Alright, so the next thing, uh, through one of the executive orders with the town budget and setting the mill rate. The, um, the executive order was to ob, that the, the Board of Selectmen would authorize the Board of Finance to approve the town budget and set the mill rate without-
So moved.
Public vote. Okay.
Well, we're back up, um, accept the budget and set the mill rate, which I understand, without a public hearing.
With, um, no, they're gonna have their public hearing. They're gonna have a public-
No, they have, yeah. One way or the other, right?
Yep, one way or another, they're gonna have a public hearing.
One way or the other, yeah.
And what are they doing different?
Maybe I-
Nothing other than it may be a Zoom, right Barb?
No, it's gonna have to be. Yep.
But what's changed? Not the executive order, what you, I didn't, I missed part of that.
Well, we don't, they don't, they don't have to have a, actually, they don't have to, we don't have to have the town meeting approve the budget. The Board of Finance can approve the budget and set the mill rate.
Okay.
Because they usually-
Right, they always do-
They approve the budget, it goes to the annual meeting, which is our annual town and budget meeting. The town votes on it, then the Board of Finance has another meeting and they set the mill rate. We don't have to have it go to the town meeting.
Right, okay.
Which is very, it's different. So anyway, uh, but Russ, I think you made a motion to authorize the Bo, the Board of Selectmen to, I mean, authorize, yikes, authorize the Board of Finance to approve the town budget and set the mill rate in accordance with the governor's executive order. Is that your motion, Russ?
That's my motion. That's my motion.
That's the motion. The part I was confused, they always, they always do set the mill rate. That's not new.
Correct. But, um, they usually-
It's a different procedure, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah. They always do that. So we're just saying they can do the mill rate like they always do and, but they can approve the budget without a town meeting.
They can approve the budget and set the mil, they can approve the budget and then they can set the mill rate right then and there without the town meeting.
Correct. They always, like I said, they always do set the mill rate.
Yep. It's just-
But after a town meeting.
Town meeting is-
Correct.
Moved from it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
No, that's, that's good. That's, that's fine because, uh, if we have the public hearing, they're gonna get any input at that point. The town meeting really, in all the years I've been involved, is just a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's it. You know, the 10 people that show up, they just approve it. Um, anyway, so, no, I'm, I'm fine with the Board of, uh, Finance doing that.
Okay.
Will you second it?
Yes, he seconded it.
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will, I will get them that. Um, okay. So we're coming up to our transfer station permits again. Regard, from July 1 to 6:30. Currently, last year, I mean, uh, I would like to see, would just to keep this the same, that if they purchase them in May or June, it's $40. Um, and then if it's purchased after June 30th, it's $50. Any additional permit is $10. Um, a volunteer permit, fireman, EMT, board or commission member, and it's, um, active EMT fire, uh, that they get it for free.
Right, I agree. And then they pay for the second one.
They pay for the second one, which is $10. And, uh, right. And now we're, believe it or not, we're selling some that, I think there's three on Jimmy's desk right now, the, uh, that are half a year and, and less. It's $25. But it, you know, we have people from out of state who are renting, et cetera. And I'll tell you what, the, asking Albert his, um, he's saying how much is coming in and the fact that people are staying home, they're cleaning out. So we've got a lot going on at the transfer station. We've changed, you know, the, the bottles, collecting the way that we sorted out the five cent cans and bottles to go into resident relief. There's no red- There's no redemption centers open. It's also dirty, so everything's just going in together. We're, we're still, um, separating our paper and our cardboard, but, um, it, there's just a lot going on. There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff moving out of the transfer station.
Right. Bring back the landfills, I'd say.
The day, the day is not too far off. That might have to be open more than three days a week.
You're right. If this keeps going.
Yeah, no, it's crazy.
Yeah, good point, Tim, good point, yeah.
I mean, it might have to go the four days.
Hopefully coming in the end, I'm being positive.
I know.
I can't take much more of this.
But the three days a week goes many, many years back and we've grown extensively and, just to make it a little bit, I mean, it gets crazy up there, especially Saturday.
But Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, this is all because of this, right? This hasn't happened before this.
No, 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 it is all because of this, but a lot of this may, these people may stay.
Oh, you're right, Jim. I hea, I heard a real estate market is now gonna boom for weekend homes. That's what I'm hearing from the real estate agent. Well, we'll see when that day comes, yeah.
Okay.
So, I see, Kim, you're still on the line. Is Albert there?
He is.
Did, what?
Wake him up.
Albert, you wanna say something about this?
Wake him up. Drink out of his head.
Hey, uh, no, we got a lot of stuff now, but yeah, it's definitely from weekend and, uh, people moving up here, so we'll have to wait and see what happens at the end.
Yep.
But we do have more than we have.
Yeah, hauling out more, so.
Yeah.
It's busy up there. And Albert, you're doing a great job with it. And, uh, you know, we're trying to make people wear their masks and everything. I, every, anytime I've been there, you've had your gloves on, so that's good and your mask, so that's been good. Um, and we, it's something we have to do. So, I appreciate how clean you keep everything and that you move people through. Nobody's standing around jabbering.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, so we'll look at that. So, we didn't vote on the transfer station permits, did we? Did we say all in favor?
Oh, yeah, that's all right, yeah.
The cost for.
Motion to, motion to just keep it status quo same.
Okay, I, I, Russ, did you, I thought Russ made that motion already.
Did he? I'll second it then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim seconded.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next thing.
We already voted too, so.
Oh, we did?
We voted twice.
Julie shaking her head over there.
Then we're gonna get Albert off the couch.
Being recorded, Russ, okay. The state bond and, um, the local bridge program. So, tomorrow, actually, the State Bond Commission is meeting and, um, I've gotta keep my fingers crossed that we're gonna be able to get our local bridge money for Davenport. And, uh, because everything's been on hold, the legislature's been closed, um, and not only that, it would be all the bonding money for town aid road, et cetera. So, that's happening tomorrow, so I'll let you know what happens there.
Okay.
Okay.
Report on that. Okay, we had shred it day the end of April, uh, in one minute, they were on, the next minute, they called and said corporate shut them down. So, we're, we're canceling shred it day for, which we always do around Earth Day, so Albert, that won't be up there this year, um, maybe in June, we'll do it. So, the, the other item I have, yep, did you wanna say something? Nope, okay. The other item I have is, uh, Citrine Power and that I just put as a placeholder because I absolutely want them to come in. I didn't want them to come tonight, uh, but I want you to hear, uh, the selectmen, I want you to hear from them personally about this, you know, buying power.
I, I agree, Barbara. I would like to hear them personally, not do it over the net and it's not something we need, because I have a lot of questions after, uh, talking to our solar people in my company. I have a lot of questions. Um, it sounds good, but just wanna make sure.
Yep, so I'm, that's just a placeholder, so I need a motion to table that.
So moved. Second.